I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could take a roll call then?
Commissioner Cavallaro is absent. Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Schwab?
Here.
Commissioner Gerard?
Here.
Commissioner Salzio?
Here.
Commissioner Hall?
Here.
And Chair Hanley?
Here.
Is there someone that would like to make a motion to approve Dave's absence?
I will support him.
I'll support him.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? Any abstains? Thank you. And we'll look at the agenda. I would like to propose that we move the new business portion forward in front of old business in the interest of time. Our visitors.
I'll concur.
I'll support that.
Excellent. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Abstained? And that is approved. And then the minutes from the last meeting. Nothing stuck out in me as being in the press.
I will move for approval of minutes presented.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Abstained? And that's passed as well. And now we will open the meeting for any public comments and communications concerning items not on the agenda. Seeing a whole swath of people here to make public comments, we can move on. And move to new business A, special use permit for the fireworks display. Do you hear about fireworks?
Yeah, I didn't know what you wanted to do.
Yeah, come on up to the microphone.
So we're going to be at 12:50 Main Street, which is just right down the street. And we're looking at being able to open this Friday, which is the 13th, and close on basically Saturday, the 6th will be our last full sales day, or the 5th, I'm sorry. And then the 6th will be kind of a tear down day and cleanup day. We usually kind of keep the table open because people kind of come in and buy for, you know, other holidays and that type of thing. Hours of 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through, uh, Sunday through Saturday, so seven days a week. And then with special hours of 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on the 3rd and the 4th. We basically note that it's pretty much until customers stop coming in is when you close down because otherwise you just, you know, you end up sitting on the merchandise, so. But we've got Michigan permits all done, $10 million in liability insurance for the location. Everything, fire inspections all set up for Friday, so pending approval today, we're ready to go.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Sure, Jason, last name's Lambra, L-A-M-B-R-A-C-H-T.
Thank you.
And do we have proof of that insurance?
I'm by the way.
Please. Okay, thank you. There were some comments in the Williamson Works memo that we may need to just talk about briefly. Is the tent going to be fully enclosed or is it open?
No, it's got three, well, I guess that's a tricky, tough question to answer. There's bunting on the side so that it gives it a look that it's a, that it's more of a building, but it is just a complete open tent. But there's three exits and each of those exits are 10 feet wide. The state of Michigan only requires 60 inches, but we're going, basically you've got to go from pole to pole in order to get exit. And it's a 40 by 40 tent, there's four poles on each side, so that's what kind of makes them 10-foot long entrances and exits, so. But there, it's supposed to be three for the state of Michigan, so we're basically matched up to the guidelines. I've got a site map too, or I mean a map of the inside.
Okay, yeah, that's in here.
Okay.
There's just some concern about trash and making sure that that doesn't blow away.
Right, no, we have a broom and dust cam on site, part of the daily operators. We have tent operators that run the tents. Part of their maintenance is to make sure that they pick up any of that kind of stuff and sweep up any of the, any of the scraps and things. Most of the time we're a trapper of trash, then we are a giver of it. It kind of ends up getting stuck inside the tent, so we end up cleaning most of the trash that falls near the area.
Any other questions?
What about lighting on the, on the days you're going to be open a little later?
Yeah.
Kind of lighting is there?
So it's a, it's a, again, part of the state of Michigan, LARA, Fire Safety Code. It's, we're using six tent, six, in comparison maybe 60 watt bulbs, but they're LEDs so that we can run them off battery backup. And then three emergency exit signs that are all lit on each of the exits. And so you just unscrew one of the light bulbs, you untrip the wire, and it, it, those come right on. The three light, the, or the six lights do a wonderful job of lighting up the inside. It actually kind of has a glow to it. It's lit up.
You'd be facing Main Street as well?
No, they're inside, they hang out inside the tent, so no lights will be coming in shooting outward. They're all in the canopy of the tent, I should say, yeah.
Does it meet condition four of the recommendations? I don't see that here. I don't know what I'm looking at. Make sure that that happens. Any open air business display shall be at least 20 feet from the street right of way line and shall not block pedestrian traffic or motor submission. Do we know that that, that needs that?
Right, based on the site plan that I have, I don't think it does. I mean, I think it could be easily moved to the south a little bit to accommodate that. That 20 foot setback, and it appears there's plenty of parking on the site too, so accommodate cars
Okay.
to the south of the, over where the tent would be, so that can just be a simple condition of approval.
Okay.
Do you need me to bump it south as you're saying? Yeah.
Yeah, it needs to be at least 20 feet from the street right of way line.
Which is, where is your street right of way line? This street or is it set back from that? And sometimes we just have it actually set back.
Great question.
Probably the sidewalk, but we have to.
The sidewalk, okay, we can go. I can go 20 from the sidewalk, if no problem.
Okay.
I can, I can just shoot even a little bit of a cascade tent.
Other questions? Any motion?
I will move for approval of the fireworks display.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion passes, thank you.
Do you need me for anything else then?
No, I think that's it, thank you.
Okay, so just make sure it's about 20 feet south of the sidewalk.
Right.
For the walls or the tent stakes? The walls basically mean the posts where you see them or the tent stakes?
Stakes in the south.
Stakes, I'll just, just to make sure.
I think it's the entire structure, right?
Okay. Because the stakes obviously go like five, six feet past. So.
It's great, thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, and then moving back to old business. Review of mixed use zoning, what everyone's been waiting a month for, we've been so excited. Nonconforming properties. Are you going to talk to us about it, Angie?
Yeah, this is really, really exciting.
Okay.
So at the last meeting, we were talking a bit about, you know, what, where we were thinking about running with the district and where it makes sense to do so. And, you know, we kind of got the sense that there wasn't a lot of objection to the regulations and the dimensional requirements and everything that we had proposed. But there was some concern about making life difficult for those who are already there, and that's what we took a look at on the map. That is attached to the, the brief memo that I, that I prepared. Basically what we did is we took a look at the district as it's proposed now. And we said, okay, if we just enacted this tomorrow, how many parcels would be, or not how many parcels, how many buildings or uses would become nonconforming by action? In other words, what things are probably legal today, they would meet the standards of the ordinance today. And if we enacted this, then they would, then become not compliant anymore. And, and when you do that, you have to be careful because it restricts, or it can restrict the ability for someone that has a nonconforming building to expand it, to, you know, change it, to do whatever. And so we took a look at that, and you'll see on the map, there's, there would be a bunch of them for varying reasons. So everything that's in green on that map would be conforming. There would, I would, I don't see any problems.
It's all green.
And it's all green. You mean it's all green?
It's a little bit all green. Shades of green.
Do you have real color?
I, I do have real color on this one.
Was in color.
Did that not come out on?
It crossed that out.
Okay, I'm not sure.
I'm glad to see that I wasn't the one who was puzzled.
Yeah, I was like, hey, that looks pretty good, there's just those two little brown buildings there.
Brown buildings.
Yeah, no, so it's, it's almost everything except for the properties where we're sitting right now and across the street.
I can run any copies.
Can you? Okay, that would be awesome to get.
I was like, I don't know what I'm looking at here.
So just to continue for a minute while she's, while she's making copies. Generally, the reason why all those buildings have become nonconforming is mostly due to either that minimum and maximum setback that I had proposed. If you recall in the amendment, we talked about having, having no minimum setback, but also having a 10-foot maximum setback. And there are a bunch of buildings that are there that are setback, 15, 20, 25, 30 feet or more. And then also some of the ones that, where it meets the setback requirement, it doesn't meet the requirement that 80% of that building frontage be built to the setback. So like the one, the little granite right across the street is a perfect example. It's actually the setback, it meets the setback, it's built right up to the street, but only about, you know, 20% of that lot is occupied by the building, it's a street, and the rest of it is not. And those are two of the things that really cause a lot of problems. So what I've proposed in, in the copy of the amendment that you received just tonight, there's, nothing has changed in this amendment, except for if you flip to the third page, second and third page, I've, I've suggested an amendment of your nonconforming building standards. And all I'm suggesting is that we add a sentence at, at the end of all this, which is on the third page, and it's highlighted there about a third of the way down. And it says, "Legal nonconforming buildings and structures in the mixed-use district may be extended, enlarged, remodeled, or modernized only if the extension, enlargement, remodeling, or modernization does not increase the degree of nonconformity." And so basically what we're saying there is as long as you don't make it worse, as long as you don't make it less conforming than it already is, they can continue to move forward and they can, you know, if they need to expand their business, they can do that. But if they have a building where it's only, you know, 50% transparent, thank you, and they want to make it so it's 20% transparent, we'd say, no, you have to be, you're going the wrong way. We want it to always be moving towards compliance. Wow, okay, so yeah, this is, this probably makes a lot more sense now.
There'd have to be quite as concerned of what is what.
So you'll see on, on the map that the two little buildings that are in, that are red, we're pretty sure, sure those would be nonconforming buildings in terms of like the setback and also a nonconforming use where, and that means that, you know, that the use of the property isn't something that would be permitted in the mixed-use district as, as is written now, we don't think. The lighter red, kind of pinkish, you know, salmon kind of color, those would all be conforming uses of land. So, so the use of the property is okay, but this is where all those buildings aren't meeting those dimensional requirements. So again, for example, when you'll see little grant, little L-shaped thing across the street here and a bunch of those others, most of them, all of them really failed to meet either the, that, between zero and 10-foot setback. And if they meet that, then they are meeting the 80% frontage thing, or vice versa. And then there are some other, you know, the little yellow, you know, structures and there are accessory buildings and not as concerned about those, we haven't, you know, dug into that yet. I don't foresee a lot of problems with those. You know, but again, you know, this map revealed kind of two issues. One, we either need to really rethink rezoning those blocks east of Washington Street, or we need to really take a look at the, at the nonconforming chapters so we don't cause really big headaches for the business owners and the property owners in those areas. You know, that was really the focus of, of our, our analysis here and kind of sort of further that discussion, see you guys, see where you guys want to go, so. I'll turn it back over to you guys, and if you have questions or thoughts or concerns, feel free to fire away and we can work through this.
I like the idea that we're, you know, always saying move forward. If we add this thing, we're saying, you know, you're not, it's not a big deal now. If you make a change, we want you to make it better than worse.
Right, I mean, one, one effect that that change will probably have is it will probably keep some of those nonconforming buildings around longer. So the process to kind of build out to where the city wants to be in, you know, 10 or 20 years might take longer because we're allowing people to keep their building as nonconforming and not make them change it. So, you know, that's kind of a downside, if you will. But again, the upside, you know, would be that there remains an life of, a bit easier for those. And again, that also means that any, if someone, you know, bought a building and bulldozed it, they would still have to build it in compliance with the ordinance. To me, it's not just a, you know, it's not just a do whatever you want, you don't have to read these standards. It's if you're enlarging, expanding, modernizing, remodeling, that's when that comes into play. If, if, you know, if it burns to the ground or, you know, fall, you know, something happens and the building is destroyed by more than, what is it, 60% or something, it would still have to be completely compliant at that point. So this is really only addressing those kinds of piecemeal, you know, improvements that, that people tend to make to frontages or, you know, add, you know, adding or replacing some windows or expanding on the back, or, you know, who knows what they would want to do.
Is there anything here that, because much of this is historic district commission? Does one override the other or are things not a problem?
Um, I don't, I'll, I'm going to have to, to check into that more, more. I did make some notes and just kind of questioning what their, you know, how that all works and how, you know, the rules are going to be. I think, you know, the zoning ordinance kind of covers all, is my initial thought, but I'm going to have to do some more checking on that.
Okay. And another question. Seeing that it is historic district commission, should anything in our zoning dictate architecture or building materials?
Um, it can. The question is if you guys want to regulate or not. You know, some, there are some ordinances.
I would certainly like to keep all lines out of the main.
Yeah, right. So, um, yeah, I mean, there is.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of up, up to you guys. I mean, we can, you know, there are some places where they do those, you know, form-based or place-based codes, where they get down to regulating, you know, windows that need to be vertically proportioned and, you know, buildings can't be more than, you know, they've got to be brick or stuff. No mild siding, no aluminum siding, no.
But here again, I think a lot of that is covered in the historic district commissions.
Yeah, yeah, it could be, and so.
Well, I'd like to kind of extend that.
Yeah. So, yeah, again, that's something that we can certainly check into and see how far the historic district stuff goes. And if you guys won't want to take it further, you know, you can, there may be some resistance to that, but again, it, it might be worth exploring just to try to keep it a quality.
Do you want to resist?
Just nothing to, do we have to vote on this or, you know? Have we just?
Personally, I would like to take a month to review the thing. We have a real color map. Historic commission.
Grab her on, get what this is.
So table it. Okay. We can look at that again next month?
Do you need a motion or we're just going to do it or?
I think we could continue conversation on it without a motion.
All right.
Thank you, Andy, for working with us.
Sue, nothing is hanging out there that is just driving this in the next 30, 60, 90 days, is it?
Well, like Andy mentioned at the last meeting, it's something that you don't want to continue to drag on for several months. So I would say within the next couple of months, it may be next month or two, it might be nice to get it taken care of.
The, the draft orders you have in, in front of you is, you know, mostly complete. If you guys are comfortable with the boundaries as they are, you know, outlined in blue there. You know, if you're comfortable with that and then with the addition of that nonconforming language, you know, that'll, you know, that'll get us pretty close to, to where you guys want to be. And then checking this historic district stuff and seeing what kind of architectural requirements they have will be worth looking into. And if, if they don't have much, then the question is, do you want to add, add additional standards in this amendment here to talk about, you know, building materials, you know, window proportion, architectural, you know, whatever? Again, that's, that's kind of a policy question for you guys, just as far as how much you want to.
Is this where it would go, would go in this ordinance and not somewhere else?
Correct, yeah.
I apologize, that wasn't it last minute. It looks like we shrunk the area, it looks like there was a lot more area last time we were considering.
Because of the nonconforming properties, I think, right? That's why we made it a little bit smaller?
Yeah, and, and the character of the, the areas further east just, you know, it, it didn't quite sort of match up with, with the rest of this, so. That was kind of the focus on, on shrinking that down a bit to, you know, get, get us through, you know, this process and, and looking where we want to be with the, with, with the properties that are outlined on there.
Okay, thank you. And then moving back to more new business, the general provisions.
We can start with this.
Okay.
This is something that Andy and I have been talking about, adding a subsection to Section 4.10 of our general provisions. And this is in relation to it would, such as the fireworks that came before us tonight, this would prevent them from having to come here for the special meeting. Same example that we have for June 26th, we have another fireworks display that's coming for their special meeting. This would just allow us to approve this administratively. And it, it goes into further possible situations such as selling Christmas trees. You know, I don't think that that's necessarily the route that we want to go as far as, because Christmas trees are considered more really of a transient merchant, short term.
So temporary, just temporary.
Yeah, yeah. And this only is affecting our zoning ordinance, it does not affect our code of ordinance, which that is something that would be changed through the city council. I don't know if you want to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, my thought, there is a couple of concerns that I have with doing this the way that we're doing it. One, having somebody who's going to be selling fireworks for one, it seems like an awful lot of written rolls to go through to do something like that. And then the other sort of concern that I have is that by approving these as, I would call them up, or open-air businesses, the ordinance doesn't really contemplate treating those as anything other than a principal use, so like a car dealer could be an open-air business or a, you know, RV sales place would be an open-air business. This is almost something that's temporary and accessory to something else going on, on the property. These aren't empty properties that are only being used for fireworks sales. And so it's, and as you guys also know, you can't have two principal uses approved on the same property. And so that concerns me a bit. And so by allowing these as kind of a temporary use, we already allow, you know, temporary sales yards, temporary sales offices, Christmas trees, any other sort of merchandise that someone wants to sell temporarily. I think that it might be a bit more of a speed line process. Instead of making them go through the special needs process to have them be able to be approved administratively, I struggle to come up with a reason why fireworks tent, for example, would need special consideration or, you know, something from the planning commission. And if I recall correctly, this has changed, the fireworks law that was enacted a few years ago said that you can't treat fireworks sales differently from anything else. You can't have the special, you know, fireworks regulations in your ordinance. So that's why we've been treating these as basically temporary uses along with Christmas tree sales along with, you know, any other kind of temporary merchandise sales you can think of that you've seen on the road as you drive somewhere. It's just something that, you know, I was a little concerned about, and I know, and we've enacted this in, in some other places. To my knowledge, I don't know if they've done anything with it yet as far as approving anybody. But it's, to me, it seems like a good idea to sort of just less effort for something that is only going to be there for a month.
How does that floral shop work, that, that temporal McDonald's for the five months that it's up? Is that something special?
Yeah, it's a special use permit that you can approve with, I think with a lease, I want to say, some years as an open-air business.
I mean, the difference, yeah, these, these things like the, the special needs approval runs with the land. And so if they come back next year, I don't know that they would have to go through this again. As long as they're in the same spot, doing the same thing. If they move down the street, then they got to starve over it now.
Is this the same person that comes every year that's been asked?
I do not recall good stuff fireworks coming.
No, the last one was, it was something U.S.A. or.
Yeah, it was.
I forget the name of it, but.
It's a different business.
It's a different operation.
So if we made an amendment, we could say, you guys would look at it and say, oh, they're 20 feet from the property line, blah, 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 all good?
Yeah, they would have to pay their application fee still. And it would be reviewed by Andy in Williamson Works. But it would be a simpler process. Right now, we have to advertise for it, we do a 300-foot ladder to all of the surrounding. We do a 300-foot ladder to all of the surrounding neighbors. There's that time period of 30 days.
Paul? Jim's wondering if you have something?
I would say no problem with that proposal. Approve the thing administratively. It makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Does that mean we don't have to come on the 26th?
You still have to come on the 26th.
Oh, okay.
I can't make it.
Oh.
Yeah. Another thing that I think we can check into is to see if, you know, why can't we permit these as these, like, with the Christmas trees as these transient merchants or whatever you call them, it seems like the same kind of thing to me. And so if it is, then, you know, maybe we can do that too. So instead of amending zoning, because I don't want to treat these differently from anything else because you're not supposed to.
Right. Is there some kind of like timeframe we could put on it? A transient business that doesn't exceed 45 days or something and then?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So whatever it is, you want to have a 45-day-long yard sale or something?
Well, I think you have to be careful though with transient merchants because they are only allowed right now under special events such as festivals, burger walk, so on and so forth. So you have to be careful when you get into that definition to a transient merchant. How much of this do you want around the city? Where are we going to allow a tent to go off? Whether it be, you know, on the sidewalk along Main Street?
And like a garden center may be starting in April and running through pumpkin season. So it's, I'd rather leave it up to the city management to make any decision on that.
I mean, the language that we wrote for Comerian County, it limited it to only, they only have one commercial district. So it limited to only that. Here, we can do the same thing, only have them C3. And then, yeah, we can, you can put timetables on it. You know, we wrote a two, a period not extending, not more than two months and could be extended by two additional successive periods of two months, two months each, provided the seasonal event which it relates is continuing. So theoretically, it could go six months if they, if the demand was there for that particular business. And then we also added some additional standards about, you know, adversely impacting neighborhoods and traffic hazards and some of those kinds of things. So we can certainly put, you know, put limits on it in terms of the duration, in terms of what they sell, if it can be extended, what the process is and that kind of thing.
Sounds good to me. I think by freeing it up for us, that we can focus more on the strategic plan and some of the other bigger issues, long-term things. Do we make a motion on this?
Yes.
Is there someone that would care to do that?
I'll make that motion. I'll support it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion passes? And staff report or anything?
You may need to... Is that easy?
Commissioner remarks, our favorite part of the evening. Do you have anyone to start?
I really got nothing, but thanks.
I'm going to say a vote.
It's all good. Talkative, but...
No remarks?
All right, so we are all set. So we will say the meeting is adjourned at 7:34. Is there a motion? Yeah, let's do that.
Motion.
All those in favor to adjourn this meeting?
Yes.
All those opposed? Any abstained? We're out of here.